All right, welcome everybody to the Buckeye Valley Board of Education September meeting. Can I get a roll call please?
Mr. Laboni.
Here.
Mr. Dickie.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mrs. Gavin.
Mrs. Gavin is on the east side of the road as well. If you are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In fitting after our Pledge of Allegiance, we just want to highlight that Buckeye Valley was awarded, recognized as a Purple Star School. The award recognizes school with a strong commitment to supporting military-connected students and their families by establishing a dedicated point of contact for these families, providing professional development for staff on military family needs, and offering supportive program like Military Kids Clubs or Transition Support for New Students. The award aims to create military-friendly schools that help mitigate challenges associated with high student mobility. So, great to get that recognition.
Thank you for going down there and saying that, Mary Kate.
So, the certificates are for Buckeye Valley Middle School.
Awesome.
Thank you, I'll present that to them.
Buckeye Valley West Elementary School.
There aren't many districts that have all schools.
And Buckeye Valley High School.
Excellent.
Thank you so much, thank you for doing that, thank you.
And while we're on recognition, Mary Kate was awarded an Aptitude Award by OSBA. It is, the Aptitude Award honors board members who show a deep understanding of several key areas of school board governance that include vision, accountability, policy, community engagement, relationships, and advocacy. I think you were one of, was it 55 or something?
That's what the email says, yes.
So, congratulations on that, Mary Kate.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to approval of our agenda. I am going to ask to pull, where is it? 5.11, I'd like to strike that from the agenda. There's some revisions, spelling errors that need to be corrected on the organizational chart. So, we're going to strike that.
5.11, is it?
Yep, 5.11, please. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to have modified on the agenda before we approve it? Very good, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the modification of 5.11, please?
And the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approved the agenda as presented with the modifications.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey, roll call please.
Mr. Laboni.
Yes.
Mr. Dickie.
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Penbrock.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the attachments on the recommendation of the Treasurer. Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Dickie.
Yes.
Mr. Laboni.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Penbrock.
Yes.
I know, sorry, you have to sit a minute.
Thanks, feel like my dad. I wasn't gonna say it. All right, it looks like we've got one public participation on agenda items. It will be Candy Staley. This will be for Student Success, Five-Year Forecast, Home Instructor, and the Elimination of School Fees.
Candy Staley, 2258 County Road 156, Carrington. Thank you for allowing me to speak once again. I was just going over the board agenda and under Student Success, the proposal. There's a term that goes with operations, it says efficient operations. For me, I think we need a stronger word than that. Efficient just kind of means mediocre to me, and I would like to be the best that it can be. Also, there's a line in there about responsible fiscal stewardship to demonstrate a fiscally conservative approach, which I'll get back to in just a minute. And then where it says engage in communication, it includes staff, parents, and community. Why don't you add the term families as well? So, it's a whole rounded thing. On the five-year forecast, I went almost blind reading that. I don't know how you do it, Kelly. The graph on page five is very concerning, the negative cash flow predicted by 2030. I was surprised about the stalemate increases like for student wellness. I don't know what all that encompasses, but seems to me that should be going up, not going down, same with the gifted. Does the substitute teacher total that's included in the forecast include the building subs? Or is that a separate entity? And then I was blown away by the expenditures for 2026, $41 million. I had a question about the home instructor. It says this person's getting paid $68.82, and I just wondered how that's determined? And is this open to everyone? And then finally, the elimination of school fees for the 25-26 school year. I feel like it's opening a hornet's nest. Where will the money come from to offset this? I think it would be a nightmare to do reimbursement through school lunches. What is covered in the pay-to-play fees? What do you mean by field trips? Are they the day ones or the overnight ones? It's not specified. And I appreciate the idea of thinking outside the box and trying to help families financially. But with a building addition that's coming up and with the forecast, I don't know that according to your terms, demonstrate a fiscally conservative approach if that's the way to go. So, that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Candy. All right, we will move on to the district update now. Mr. Strangens?
Just had a few items, and I just wanted to touch base on, just so the community knows, we're working on a farm-to-table program. Mr. Reader and Stacy Peterson, our food service director, is working on that. It should be coming out shortly in October, I know we had talked about that. We just completed a 64-page safety audit of all of our buildings and submitted that and we're flying colors past that. The middle school roof is very close to completion if not finished. We saw the noun spouts on. Middle school addition, we'll be able to have an update probably the end of October for the community at that point. So, we're still kind of working on that, and then we'll have the community have some input to that in late October. We are working on staining concession stand and restrooms after a difficult Friday night, 5-0 Friday night, but difficult time, those will be repaired within a week or so. Yeah, so we're in good shape, so thank you.
I don't know if difficult's the right word.
I was trying to be kind.
There's no kindness needed.
We do have a Student Success presentation, or at least open for questions, with our executive director, Teaching Ryan, and our high school principal, Zach. They've submitted a couple items that they've been working on for over a year.
So, yeah, so the first is the Portrait of a Learner. If anyone in the audience wants a copy, I can give them to you. So, Portrait of a Learner, currently we have Portrait of a Graduate, which was developed just before I was here. And we wanted to go ahead and do a refresh just to align with some different ways. State priorities have changed, district priorities have changed. And we've also, the trend in Ohio is also to start calling it Portrait of a Learner instead of Graduate. So, last year around this time, we formed a committee of staff, and we worked pretty much a full year looking into different examples, and again, going back and forth on to what we thought we wanted to see from our learners as they go through the pre-K through 12 system here. So, this is the graphic we came up with with Cassie's help. The old one was just sort of in columns, it was a lot wordier. And this is a little more concise, and we think helps get a good snapshot of our academic programs as well as our counseling systems and everything else within the district. So that, we are hoping to get either feedback on or a nod of approval this evening. To the other, as Candy mentioned, along with that, this was sort of the administrative team. We had some teachers get feedback, but as you guys know, the original goals, there were four. And really, ever since this current board has been in place, we've really operated under more five with the facilities and the fiscal broken more into two different goals. So, we wanted to just sort of give nod to that, as well as again, over time, things have progressed. Different words that are used on a state level have changed, or anything else. We wanted to sort of shake it up a bit, make it a little more relevant. So, that's where we still came up with Student Success. Instead of caring culture, which has always been a little vague to people what we meant by that, we made a respectful culture for operations. And the fiscal, it used to be resource stewardship. So, we worked to break into efficient and safe operations, and then responsible fiscal stewardship. And then finally, it used to be efficient communication, and we did engaging because we thought really, we want to be engaged with the community. So, again, this was through several reiterations, a lot of administrators. We spent two retreats on this. So, again, hoping, I am more than happy if where it says parents, be a very simple edit to put in families if that's something the board would like to see. But again, would like either some feedback tonight or a nod to go forward with these because these four goals really do drive like our brilliant continuous improvement plans and everything else. So, there you go. Any questions for Zach and I?
I've got a question on the Portrait of a Learner.
Yes.
The driven learner, it talks about choosing learning methods. Is that more at a high school level? That the kids will kind of get to have a little more input in that? I mean, elementary and middle, they're kind of set and exploring different ways at the instruction of the teacher.
Yeah, I mean, it does give nod though to, you know, again, this is supposed to be a little more visionary. It's not exactly what we're doing right now. So, I think long-term, we're talking about, you know, even in the younger grades, continuing to enhance where, you know, we're done with a unit and kids have a menu that they can choose from to show us how they master the areas in that unit. Instead of just like you're going to have a test or you're going to make a diorama, you know, they have a menu of choice. So, can sort of match it. Their learning styles are an outdated thing, there's been research that that's not really a thing. But still to match their customization of their thinking and their passion around that topic. But yes, certainly as we could look into the middle school and high schools where there's more and more customization and individualization that would go into play.
So, when I read it, that kind of made me think like the kind of voice and choice, right? Like that, nice and nice kind of read that. So, are the five categories, I mean, did you guys have a lot of, we were with this? Or is this pretty much kind of what the state's looking for?
Five years?
Yeah.
This was, this was a lot of back and forth. I mean, we can certainly have more than five. I think we took the former that had, I'm trying to think how many were in the former. I think there was five under the former, but then each one had like three sub areas. So, we tried to take, marry that work along with looking at like report, different areas of the report cards, where we're trying to go with our coursework. And we came up with five we thought was encompassed most of the work we were doing and was broad enough that as, what we didn't want is the old one sort of pigeonholed. It was so specific that as we progress, as we met goals, as we decided to purposely abandon a goal and go towards something else, it really didn't give us a lot of wiggle room. So, this we thought was broad enough, but still gave us guidance.
I also think the cyclical.
Absolutely.
Learning, you know, does make sense to me. The puzzle pieces that they're all interconnected.
Absolutely.
Does make some sense as well.
Any questions on the portrait?
Or the goals?
You'll just be sure to go back and clear up some commas. Looks like in the engaging communications, the initial E is not in bold, the rest of them are. You'll just make sure that everything's cleaned up and punctuation's right before we publish this.
That's a, rhyming in the weeds with it too much.
It's fine, yeah, it happens.
Well, I'll do is tell Cassie to look at it. She's always like.
I'll clean it up.
She's like, fine.
She makes something else.
I will say, to clarify, I do want to clarify this. This was a document like this, Cassie made it beautiful for me.
Okay.
And I had Cassie have to change this a few times. Each time I asked her, I grimaced because I knew how much time she put. The plan is to make this as pretty as this. But I said, Cassie, please don't waste your time on that until I know it's final. So, that's where we'll go.
Very good.
And again, I agree with Candy certainly of substituting out parents and the families to be more inclusive of everyone. But this will also change, like even the district update, then we'll be having the five, so it'll help us align.
You have a question?
Okay. All right, I appreciate it.
All right, is that it for district update? Very good, we're going to move on to financial items. This is your show here, Kelly. I'll make a motion that the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve the attached financial reports at the recommendation of the Treasurer. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you.
So, the first document is my normal monthly reconciliation from August. Nothing out of the ordinary, architects that obviously came in. So, we are ready to roll for this school year notes mid-September. We're just chugging along, so that's nothing out of the ordinary for the normal monthly update.
Very good, anybody have any questions on that? And these are just the first five initial documents in 4.1 that we're running to approve.
Correct, just the normal monthly routine of financials.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Laboni.
Yes.
Mr. Dickie.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Penbrock.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the five-year forecast, please?
The Buckeye Valley Board of Education approved the November 2025 five-year forecast. Or September, yes.
Thanks, Mary Kate. Thank you, Tom. All right, Kelly, this is your show now.
As you can tell, it's on the November adoption. So, okay. So, we had a fine budget bill. I think that everyone has heard most of it, like I presented a little bit on it back in May when it was still going through the process of the State House. Again, this is my normal slides, revenue expenditures. But again, the biggest, I think, conversation we're going to have in this forecast update is the House Bill 96 that is going through legislation. So, in the past, it was always from January until June, schools freaked out about the letters that are going to do with their by annual budgets, and then usually by June 30th, everything got settled. The schools were always usually made whole or at least equal to what they had, maybe not better, but usually never worse. This is the first time in my 15 years being a school treasurer that this was a very, very, I'd say, rough budget bill to go through. They were making very direct decisions for schools that would actually would have taken place immediately. And so, it was very hard for schools to be able to budget, bounce back, figure it out. The two, several things did get pulled out of the budget bill prior to the governor signing it by June 30th. However, in my world, so before, is that the state of Ohio requires districts to do a two, a five-year forecast twice a year. It was always, it was due, my first time was October, then it was November, November and May. Now, this year, it's actually due by October 15th. And since we don't have a board meeting prior to October 15th, that happened from a September board meeting. And then also again, by the end of February. So, again, moving up the date of February, and then after this year. And then next year, the dates are August 31st and February 28th. So, they essentially want a budget, it's not even a five-year forecast anymore, it's actually current year plus four. Sorry, plus three, current year plus three. I'm still going to do, and if you guys remember, last month or two months ago, we approved the policy that regardless of the state says, I'm still going to do a five-year forecast. I think it can't hurt to have more information over less information. So, that, with that all being said, it was a quick turnaround to get everything up and ready to rock and roll for September board meeting, which also then goes into effect why I have four or five different resolutions this month is because also September is the appropriations for the year, the estimated resources are due to the county. It's a very busy time. Also, by the way, school just started six weeks ago. So, it's a lot of just getting it all together to be submitted to be board approval. And then next year, it will be even, even more time-consuming or harder because again, schools start in the middle of August, and I'm due to have a state before your budget by August 31st. So, that's one of the issues that came about. The second issue is that usually when the governor signs it and then everyone kind of goes quiet and says, okay, great, it is what it is, we'll do this again in two years. Well, this is the first time that the House and Senate came back and said, well, no, we're going to line veto what he did. So, if we keep going, Cassie, I'll get to that later. But so, pretty much that now we have big, big topics, which again is taxpayers. I'm sure you guys all heard about the property tax reforms. That's going to potentially come down, some kind of revision, something's going to happen. When? Who knows? How? What? Where? We don't know that either. And so, that is now, we're kind of just sitting to see when they come back. What are they going to compromise on or they're going to let it go? Which, again, I don't think they're going to let it go, something is going to come out of it. It just depends on what it is and when is it going to happen. So, but back, that was a lovely budget bill that we all thought we survived and we moved on from, but we're not. We're still living it every day to see what they're going to do to schools. But back to the forecast, as you guys know, the forecast is broken up between two sections. The revenue expenditures, the district revenue is, we get money from the local taxpayers or property taxes and the state. Those are two biggest ones. And then expenditures, obviously, we are a service-oriented district. So, it's going to salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and materials, anything that is to operate the district. As you can see, this is our lovely, pretty much my 12-page summary into one graph. As you can see, our expenditures are increasing faster than revenues, and we do our forecasting of spending in the later years of the forecast. First, we'll start with revenues, I'll go through the revenues and then I'll stop, ask for questions, then we can move to expenditures. Revenues, as you can see, 47% of our revenue is property tax. But in total, it shows that out of all of our $43 million in revenue, 80% of our revenue comes from our local taxpayers, which is huge. So, anything that directly affects property taxes, homeowners, it's, the school gets affected as well. And so, again, I always talk about this, is that I am very thankful in this county that my taxpayers pay and they pay on time. We have a 90% collection rate, which is huge. So, again, the homeowners do their job, I'm able to do my job. Mr. Drager said to do his job to educate the kids, so we have the funds to do so. So, we thank you guys all for that. And like I said, property tax is huge. So, if there is, and when there is some kind of reform of property taxes, it's going to be a big change for this district. Again, this is kind of just saying the same thing I said earlier, is that the House Bill 96, the government vetoed four of the provisions, but most importantly, there's still 14. Nine in the House and five in the Senate proposed laws to impact local property taxes and our valuations that could reduce local funding for all public schools in Ohio. I mean, that's huge, that schools are still looking for. There is a Governor's Tax Reform group working, again, with schools. The biggest thing for us too is that part of this budget bill was that there was called, what's called a piggyback tax exemption that was put into it, is that it gave the authority to the county commissioners, so Delaware County Commissioners, if they chose to, to give a second tax credit for the home set and rollback. So, therefore, if the county does enact that in December, which they have the authority to do, that would cost the district over half a million dollars, which was, for us, that's instantly gone. Because they used a big decision probably November, December, but they January 1st effective date. So, that's, that's a big number for us. Again, I showed the slide in the spring and it was like where it is, and now it's kind of just, it's done, but it's not done. It's, 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 it's a topic of all my PDs that I go to, it's a topic of every single webinar I have. Everyone is just unsure what's going to happen. Like I said, these are all the concerns, again, I'm not going to go through them again, but it's what's going on. I bar control, the best of our abilities. A challenge is, like I said, the House Bill 96. We are also going to go through another appraisal soon. Again, it won't be as big as the one that we received two years ago, but we can see that values in Delaware County are still increasing values, so therefore, the property taxes will be increasing as well. So, any questions with revenue?
Kelly, there was a talk about putting a cap on those reappraisals. Have you heard anything more about that?
They've been throwing out different, how or where they're going to do, it's all on that property tax reform topic. How they're going to, I say duke it out behind the scenes, and then what comes out of it is what they think they're going to do. Yeah. Correct, exactly, the Governor's Tax Reform, yeah. Again, expenditures, again, salaries and benefits is, again, it says to our people, our employees, of 73%. Again, it's in line with what we do here, we are here to educate, and so, we educate through our people. So, that's our biggest one. Benefits, 20%. That's all your health insurance, retirement, that kind of information. And then purchase services is at 70%. Again, anything that we can't do in-house, we have to outsource to external vendors, resources, that gets classified in that category. Again, another visual is that we see that costs are continuing to rise, and then salaries and benefits are growing the largest. And then, so, the board policy is 60-day cash policy, which again, as you see back in 2023, we were good. As you can see, as we're going out over the years by fiscal year 2028, as of right now's forecast, we will not hit the 60-day board policy. So, at that point, that, prior to that, they'll generate conversations with the board, administration, on what to do to get us back in that, to have to make sure we have a 60-day cash balance to be board, to be policy compliant. I just consider, again, area income tax, the first quarter '26 was greater than 2025, which again, is a great showing of the economy and Delaware County is still growing and people are still working. Real estate continues to grow. The one thing positive that come out of the House Bill 96 was that they are continuing to just have discussion about the fair school formula, which again, unfortunately, that one this time around kind of took a backseat to all the property taxes and everything else they tried to shove through in the last minute. So, it's still in there, it's just not as, usually that's always been the last called budget bills, and it's always been the topic of conversation, unfortunately, this time it wasn't the topic of conversation. Again, there's several power tax reforms, and so, it's just, it's a waiting game. And that's what we are going to do at this point until the powers above us are going to tell me my lovely number that we plug into. Are there any questions?
When you're thinking about that negative cash balance at the end of the year, is part of that because it's not accounting for funding before that funding is allocated by the state?
That, because again, we'll have another budget bill in two years. The negative spending is also us still transferring that $5 million into the Capitol Projects Fund, which again, is the board's authority to put in and out. So, we can maintain that accordingly to what fund it needs to be at the time it needs to be in the funds. So, those are the two biggest ones.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, the property taxes, property tax, the budget is created on what I know. So, I'm going on what we've been doing, what we know, and then if something changes, again, I can be coming. And then if something changes, again, I could be coming back to in February with a complete different five-year forecast. Just because again, things will be settled, right? Hopefully, things will be settled. I don't know if they will.
Right. So seeing, seeing that negative cash balance looks particularly scary, but
Correct.
Part of it is just how the numbers work and how the feeling works.
I also think if you pull 660-something districts in the state of Ohio, if you pull 2030 on 660, 660-plus districts, you're going to see a negative cash balance in 2030. Again, my opinion also think that's why they took the five-year forecast down to four, because it shows less negative balances, which shows that schools have funds. Which again, is not necessarily the true truth. But by that, I mean, when you always budget out year in, year out, again, what only you know, you don't know at all. So of course, you're always going to increase expenditures at the highest you think possible. But you're only ever going to increase your revenues minimal because again, you don't know. And so that's why I think that, that why it looks the worst that it does. Yep.
Yeah, I don't think that in my time on the board, I've seen a five-year forecast that does not nose dive.
Yeah.
And some of that is you're very conservative when it comes to your estimations as well. Some of the expenditures would be the new rate increases on the new negotiated agreement. And yeah, that $5 million does come significantly into play in our variable cash balance.
Absolutely.
And we, so we've done that for two years now, right? We've taken that off for two years.
Correct.
Okay.
Other question?
All right. Would you get booted up? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chalobani?
Yes.
Ms. Dickey?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Penber?
Yes.
All right, we're on to 4.3. This is our fiscal year '23 final appropriations and fiscal year '23 estimated resources. Do we need a motion to approve before you can discuss?
Yes.
All right. I will move to approve the fiscal year '23 final appropriations and final fiscal year '23 estimated resources. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you.
So this is the normal routine document that the board does see in September. It is the, if you guys remember back in July, you approved a temporary appropriations. That gave you 90 days of finances to get us through while working on the final appropriations for the year. This is the final appropriations for fiscal year 2026. With the estimated resources, the estimated resources also include the beginning fund balances as of July 1st. So I updated those and those are both the end ones approved, they get submitted to the county per higher vice code.
So to clarify, is this '23, '26 in our recommended action, it states '23?
'26.
All right. Just have the record reflect that this is for fiscal year '26. Anybody have any questions on those? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Chalobani?
Yes.
Ms. Dickey?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Penber?
Yes.
All right. Kelly, do you want to explain the refunding resolution?
Sure. So, right?
In terms that we can all understand, please.
Yes, yes. So when the general obligation bonds for the elementary schools were issued in 2015, it's a 30-year bond with the option after 10 years to be callable. And
Which means?
Which means callable is, compared to if you're refinancing your home. Is that right now, we could refinance these bonds at a lower interest rate and save money over the life of the bonds for the taxpayers. But by doing so, I need to promote the board to do, to do so. So what this is, is that we went through, myself and my, the team that monitors my bonds, and the legal team went through. And any, any bonds that were being issued at the higher rate that we're going to refund them at right now, we were able to pick those out, lump them into a package and refinance them. So this is just giving me the authority to begin that process. And so right now, by doing that, on current, what we know as of today with interest rates, it saved about a million dollars off the life of these bonds. And then again, that's straight back to the taxpayers, which would mean that every year, when I go to tell the county how much debt I have outstanding, it reduces every year going forward. So again, less money for the taxpayers to pay in their annual property taxes. So this is, this is just saying I'm going to begin with it. Again, it takes a couple of weeks to get it going. But like say, for example, something comes out next couple of weeks and interest rates skyrocket again. This is not setting me into redoing them. This is saying, you're allowing me to do so up to the date. And if that date comes and there's no, there's no, there's no savings for the district, we don't execute this. So this is just saying, and then the ones that we don't do, we are allowed to keep looking at this every couple of months. And if there ever is a sense to, to refund them, the ones that are left, we are able to do so. So once you hit 10 years, anything is allowed, they call it callable. Anything's allowed to be called back.
And I just want to clarify, I already know the answer to this because I asked you, but none of these terms, if any of these bonds are going to be extended, we're staying within the same term.
Correct. We're not extending anything. This is just playing in our current, now we had a 30-year bonds, we're now 10 years into it, let's reinvest it.
So okay, my question is, so, okay, we approve this and then you can, you know, pursue the refinancing. So how often do you then, now that we're past the 10-year, do you check?
So my investment company uses checks every couple of months, every two, three months. She watches it depending on if the Fed come out and they lower the rates. I mean, certain things trigger it, like election season, stuff like that. So she will watch. Again, we've been, we've been watching for last year, like last year, her and I had a meeting and it, there was no savings. There was no present value savings. We looked at it again in May, there was no present, present value savings. She did it again. And the reason why she did it again is because I have to, in order to do all this, I have to put together what's called a POS, like a point of sales, like profile to, for the investors to rein, to reinvest these general obligation bonds. Well, I'm doing a lot of that work right now in conjunction with the middle school addition, issuing those caps. Again, you have to put together a profile of saying, of pretty much like we're selling ourselves to the buy market saying, hey, this is why we're a good investment, like we're going to pay back, we're, it's a great interest rate, it's tax exempt. So I'm doing a lot of the same work right now. So there's a lot of savings in the economy of scale that I'm doing because the same information is going into point both reports. And so therefore, they, I did this, the same idea, I did the same idea when I did the elementary school bonds in 15, with the outstanding bond from the high school that was still outstanding. I conjunctually put it together to save money for the district. And so it just, it saves, it saves time and money by not having the same project done twice.
And this will come back before the board for approval?
Correct, correct.
Is anything to get?
Hundred percent. This is just saying, hey, Cal, we're giving you the authorization to start going down the path to, to execute this.
More questions? All right, let's make a motion to authorize the district to begin to research refinancing our bonds as stated in item 4.4.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chalobani?
Yes.
Ms. Dickey?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Penber?
Yes.
All right, and here we have a resolution. Would you like to?
So this is a resolution, it's going to be a board policy. But again, this is just the first reading of it, since we do two policy, two readings of a policy. So once you issue a, a bond, like for example, the one above, and or what we're doing now, the caps, is that we, the board has to approve a policy that says that we will be in compliance with the rules and regulations of the SEC. Which means is that, hey, they're going to say, hey, listen, we're giving you this $10 million to build this building. You can't turn around and make a profit off of that building. Like you can't, you can't lease it out for a significant amount of money because at the end, you, we gave you tax-free money to build this on behalf of the schools and for the taxpayers in Buckeye Valley. You can't turn around and make a significant revenue off that without paying tax, because we don't pay taxes. So it's, and it's also saying that we also will file an annual report with them every year, which we, I currently do with the outstanding elementary school bonds. And then it just, it's a list of all the things we can and cannot do. We have to be careful, like we can't go and turn around and do naming rights for this addition. Because again, it's, it's, we can't make significant income off this addition. So that is what that's saying in a nutshell. So once, so we have to have a board policy place that says that we will follow these rules and regulations. And so this is just the first reading of it. It'll come back next month and with board approval, then it will become a board policy.
So I'm assuming significant means like not much above the cost, is that essentially what we're saying?
But yeah, like you can't, you can't rent it out on the weekends and make 100,000, like, I mean, I'm just throwing numbers out there, I have no deal with, because significance is, it's very, it's very big. But I'm sure like in the cost of doing it, you can't turn around and have like Taylor Swift concert in it and make billions of dollars. Or rent the rooms out on the weekends to have, like as an Airbnb, like, because again, we're not, we're not at the tax, at the district not paying any taxes for it.
Anybody have any further questions or input regarding this? Hearing none, we will be looking at it again next month. All right, we are on to new business. Kelly, thank you for all your work.
Thank you for all of that.
I know it's a lot of work, so thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent items as presented, please?
Prove that we approved the consent items as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Well, 5.2, Title I, our federal funds for non-public tutoring services. We're going to ask to approve merit for tutoring services for non-public student services. Gives a rate and gives a, a limit on those hours. In 5.3, supplementals, you see, most of those are winter supplementals. The two at the bottom are based on the new contract numbers that we didn't have those at the time we put those in.
So those are previously approved?
Correct.
Just updating the, the number?
Correct. In 5.4, we have some volunteers, we have three, we'd like you to approve. Two for cheer and one for basketball, all in the middle school and all four winter sports. Classified substitutes, we have three of those. And two Kidwells and Robinson, and we're happy to have them join us. 5.6, classified employment, Jeanette Cox is on there and you'll see the effective date was in August. She was hired and has been driving, but between change of assistants and pretendants, her name did not get to the board. So she is already on, but we ask you to approve her tonight. On 5.7, we have a bus lease purchase agreement. And we're looking at a five-year lease, which is typical of what we do, Huntington Bank on a new bus, $28,000 and change annually. In 5.8, home instructors, they're difficult to find. They were doing those an hourly rate. And because they're hard to find, we've opened up to anyone who would like to do that. We do put a cap on that, it's 15 hours per week. In 5.9, purchase services, we're approving Kim Erskine as our speech and language therapist. She's $100 an hour. And again, we kept that at 15 hours as well. In 5.10, overnight field trips, we have three. Baseball's looking to go to Raleigh in the end of, on spring break. Camp New Hop for our sixth graders in Perrysville. And our FFA takes their annual trip this year to Indianapolis. Happy to see all three of those groups go. We, on 5.12, the tuition rate rates for, from the state of Ohio. And they are, as you see, stated in the state. That's all we have tonight for 10 seconds.
5.10, under admin contact, the dates for the Camp New Hop trip need to be corrected. That date has already passed and it also shows the trip happening for the same date to the same date. So, well, and still it's showing
Just one, one day.
So we need to get those, because that is an overnight, I think that's a two-night trip. So we need to get that corrected at least. And with the home instruction, it says that it's support for students who can't attend school at times throughout the school year due to medical or behavioral needs. Is that going to be IEPs or is that going to be behavioral needs as far as they've been sent home from school? What, what exactly does that phrase mean?
Sometimes it is someone that is sent home on expulsion. Other times, it's a long-term medical or short-term medical needs, they're not able to come to school.
But specifically the behavioral needs, is that typically a kid that's sent home on expulsion?
Yes.
Okay. Brian's raising his hand.
Was there an intent to have this leave on there?
We will handle that after we do our consent agenda. Any other questions?
On, on 5.7, I know Mr. Reader's not here, but are we on, are we on track, you know, like with our, our bus schedule? Obviously, we had terminal review of that, the challenge here is, like I saw, we were doing a little bus. We kind of up to date with all that?
We are.
We're looking to a year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Chalobani?
Yes.
Ms. Dickey?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Penber?
Yes.
All right, if we would like to take action on the portrait of a learner and the strategic plan goal, we would need a unanimous vote to amend the agenda since it has already been approved and we have four members present. And then we could then go in and make that an action item. Or we can wait until the next meeting to do so. I mean, it's been thoroughly, my understanding is it's been thoroughly reviewed through many levels. So I think maybe it just was poorly placed on the agenda. All right, why don't we? Let's get through our discussion item, delegates for Capitol Conference, and then we can take a vote to see if we want to amend the agenda. I know, that's why I want to get there first and get through the rest of the business that we need to. So we're on to elimination of school fees for the '25, '26 school year. This is an action item, so. Anybody have any discussion they'd like to put in on this before we take a vote?
Do you need to open the floor to the topic first?
Floor is open for discussion.
If I could make a comment?
Please.
All right, the resolution as it's presented is a good idea. I'm not opposed to the basis of it. However, the manner in which it's been presented leaves a lot to be desired, namely specific fee amounts, specific input from the treasurer and administrative team, and any specific exclusions. Using et cetera in an official resolution is like writing a blank check. And I feel it would be inappropriate to approve the resolution without more detail in it. I did see in the five-year, the five-year forecast in line, how was it, 50-something? In 5.010, there's a transfer for student fees for fiscal year 2026. And I would love to see that put into the resolution text and to give this important topic the attention that it deserves. and to give this important topic the attention that it deserves and the clarity that it deserves.
It does say all academic course fees and those things listed were examples.
I would be curious too what, what the new final number would be, just, you know, because again with adding on, if we're talking about for people on free reduced lunch, the pay, pay, pay by and then field trips too, I don't know if we could get a better estimate on what that went by too?
That's going to change.
Can we talk about that before?
That's going to change year to year too. I mean, based on what students actually utilize that.
Correct.
I guess maybe an average or maybe, I don't know, last few years, I don't know.
And the, the phrase, this would also include field trips. Could get messy with overnight field trips versus daytime field trips.
I like the intent of that though. We've got kids that are on free and reduced lunch and they're not going to take an overnight trip because of financial reasons. I feel like some of those overnight trips are just as important as the academic classes they take throughout the year. The experiences they have with their classmates, with their teachers, I feel are, are very important, especially when we're talking about this portrait of a learner, the whole student. So I would certainly not want to see kids miss out on those opportunities over finances.
I agree with that. This is a yes and there are several instances where students with disabilities, whether they be whatever category they are, where those students cannot attend based on their disability. It might not be in writing, but it happens. And I would like to see the support that they need also covered. So if we're, if we're doing that, let's expand it to all the students who need the, the support.
What, can you be more specific on that? I know we had a, a child in a wheelchair that had, I believe it was their mother went with them on the DC trip a couple of years ago. So I know that opportunity was afforded. I don't think that those opportunities are not afforded to the child because they require special accommodations.
Don't we have to, by law anyway, those accommodations?
Yes, sure. Yeah, so I don't think kids are being turned down because of those, unless you know, something I don't.
I would prefer to discuss that not in a, this is, this would, this would go, this would be speaking about specific students.
Understand, okay.
And I don't want to go into private matters.
Fair enough. Yeah, I mean, I think the district already is obligated to cover any of those. This is my understanding currently is that we are required to do that. Anybody else have anything?
I guess this is maybe a question for Kelly. If we do something like this, does it make any difference, I guess, in terms of, if we're talking about credit, fees back to lunch accounts, like is it cleaner to do that at the start of second semester or does that make a difference? Obviously, we're already in the school year, but I was trying to think there's a logical point in time, you know, of approving it. It's like this month versus in a couple of months or something.
For this school year?
Yeah.
No, there's no, I mean, the logic time would have been last spring. So at this point, it's, whatever you want to do it is, is the board's choice.
So maybe what we need to look at is doing this for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. I certainly don't want to create more work for your department, Kelly. And I know we had discussed this in the spring and then it kind of fizzled out. It never had any more discussion.
Because sometimes things, sometimes remarks are, well, let's explore it and then we never explore it. And then now we're saying it's too late. And then, so for next year, it would be inconvenient too, because then we'd have to make changes too. I mean, it's always going to be inconvenient, the changes have to be made. So I mean, one would be a good time to make a change, that's positive.
I'll be honest, when I was thinking about this proposal, my mind did not even clue into the fact that it's this current school year. And that this is retroactively credited to the lunch account of the students. The comments that I made would be as if these were for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Well, I'm just thinking too, I guess, I don't know how this works exactly, but let's just say if we credit this back to lunch accounts, what if you have students who pack every day, like is there another way to access that? Like what does that look like?
Yes, there's a way to access it. I mean, it's a big ask.
All right, well, I guess my suggestion would be, you guys can agree or not, would be to, let's look at doing this for next school year, but let's not wait until September. Let's have Kelly plug some numbers, do some research, work with the boosters and whomever has been picking up the paid participate fees for kids on free and reduced. If you can get some of those numbers and plug them into the forecast and give us an update on that next month so we can make a decision with the numbers plugged into our current forecast. Would that help all the board members here make a more informed decision?
I would like that. I also too, I don't know if there's an easy way to do this. I mean, I've tried to do some little bit of research on my own, but is there a way we could find like, just what percentage of districts are still collecting fees versus aren't? I mean, I know a couple in the county aren't now. So my understanding seems like us and what other are, it's kind of a split thing at this point.
Some are not doing, it's old tangy, not doing K eight, but they're doing them at the high school level.
I can do some of that. Yes, I can, I can speak on that. I have another research for the high schools.
You can do that for all the Delaware County schools, that'd be great. And then we can work on cleaning up the the wording and making sure that it's clear and concise for the proposal. And we will revisit that next month at our October meeting.
So next month, we're going to look at it and then the month after that would be the vote on it or?
We could certainly have a vote for it next month for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. It's entirely up to what the board wants to do. Let's get all the information together and get everything plugged in and we'll visit that come probably the week before the meeting next month.
We might get some more people playing some sports that we would like to have as soon as possible.
Yeah. All right, anybody else have any other input they'd like to on that item? All right, we will head on to our delegates for the Capitol Conference. I hope that everybody gets a chance to go down to Capitol Conference, at least for a day, spend some time down there and some different sessions. I believe historically, the board president has been the delegate and I believe we have an alternate as well. I'm fine keeping it that way. Mary Kate, would you be willing to be the alternate?
Yes.
Very well. Happy to be the delegate unless anybody else disagrees. Very good. Do we need to vote on those?
That makes me like a little second thought to form properly.
So Mr. Dickey will be on as the delegate for Capitol Conference. Ms. Pembroke will be on as the alternate. And we hope that everybody can make it down there at some point. All right, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add an action item for our portrait of a learner as well as uploading right now.
Strategic goals?
Our strategic goals as well. And we will add that as item seven point two, an action item. Can I get a second for that, please?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Algoodie?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
All right, the motion has passed, the agenda has been amended. Can I get a motion now to approve? I'm sorry?
Public participation.
Right, we're doing this at seven point two though.
Oh, sorry, yes, yep, yes, I got it.
Right. Get a motion to, running slow right now. A motion to approve the presented strategic plan goals and the portrait of a learner.
I move the Buckeye Valley Board of Education accept the portrait of a learner and strategic plan goal refresh as presented.
I'll second.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Mr. Algoodie?
Yes.
Dickey?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Pembroke?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for your flexibility on that. I'm sure our administrative team appreciates that.
Very much.
All right, we are on to public comment on non-agenda items. Get my magnifying glass out again here. Okay, I assumed, I don't see either of them here, so I assume they probably were not doing public participation. We will jump right into Molly Jones, please. Just Jake Jones, very well.
Good evening, my name is Jake Jones. We live at eighteen Berry Farm River Road. We are, Jill and I are the proud parents of two Buckeye Valley graduates, Sam in twenty twenty-three and Molly in twenty twenty-five. And I really like this. I really like this because you guys, you guys gave us two of these. Both my kids, I think, qualify and meet all these criteria here and they're very different kids. Okay, Sam is, Sam is a lot like me, too much like me, as a matter of fact, in that being a firefighter and but he still meets all these criteria. He's a full-time college student, he's doing well. He was set up for success the day he left here, the day he left here. My daughter Molly is on the other side of the spectrum, a little, little more quiet, still driven, extremely talented. And now she's a freshman at Audubon where she's, thanks to BV and all the work you folks do, she received enough scholarships to pay for her own college, which was obviously, you know, a load off of Jill and I's shoulders there. So I'm extremely proud of both my kids. And I came here tonight to, to just give some support for the art program because like for me, it was easy to, to get behind Sam and volunteer with, with stuff for Sam because I was used to that. You know, I coached, Jill coached tennis as well. I coached, did wrestling, I ran the scoreboards, I help out, you know, stuff like that I could help Sam with. Molly has talents that, that although Jill likes, Jill likes to do the darts, Molly actually is, is her instructor as well at this point. I don't think Molly could have reached the heights that she's already breached or accomplished the things that she's already accomplished, which include, oh, I'll brag a little bit, but being in the top twenty out of three hundred and some thousand applicants for, across North America for her art portfolio. They only give twenty awards out across the whole continent and she was one of those recipients. And I just don't think we could have done it without the art department here at Buckeye Valley. So I'm very, very appreciative because I can't, there's no way I could have helped her at all. And as much as Jill and I try, we just don't like that talent. So I'm very appreciative of that. In the same breath, the art department, and I'm assuming everybody's very, very familiar with kids. We've got two great kids.
Fifteen seconds left.
Yes, sir. They fight. One thing they've never fought about is how good Molly was at art. Sam took his art classes. Sam recognizes that he does not have that talent. And Sam has never poked fun at his sister over art. So thank you guys for everything you do, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Katie Staley?
You know my information. Just a couple of things. I look through agendas and minutes and stuff and I understand there's a human resource person that was hired. Was that, when was that? Because I'm not sure about that and what their salary is. Speaking of that, I, I don't volunteer. I sub in the office oftentimes at Buckeye Valley East. And I just have to say, I was there on a Friday and some of the same techniques to collect payroll, filling out forms and then you have to fax them. It used to be you had to fill them out and then put them in an envelope and a bus driver flew in and took those and brought them back. So I'm just wondering if maybe there's a more efficient way. I don't need to make more work for you, but it seems with technology that maybe we could gear that up a little bit. And I was just wondering about the timeline for the middle school addition. I haven't heard as much about that. So I don't know if there is in fact a timeline that I've missed somewhere along the line. And I just want to say, going on the record, the state is playing havoc with public education. You never know from one minute to the next what's going to happen. And I just, I wish there were some things we could do besides contacting our, our people in our area. So I just want to go on record as saying, there's got to be a better way. The kids deserve better, so thank you very much.
I know we typically don't do this, but I can answer to your questions real quick. The HR specialist was hired at the July meeting under classified employment.
I was sitting here for that one, that's cool.
And with the, our intent, and we have discussed internally with the middle school addition, I believe the architect is working on some renderings and finalizing the plans. We do intend to bring the board together to present all that to everybody and also invite the public to come and see what the plans are, what the final, the final idea is. And we all, we also should have a better timeline as far as moving forward, breaking ground and getting that started. So as soon as we have that back from the architect, we'll get something set up and be sure to invite everyone to come check that out. All right, thank you for your public participation. We are going to convene into executive session. This is going to be it goes a public employer official. We also have a second matter. second matter that we that we will be discussing regarding some legal matters. And then we will reconvene into public session after that. I don't anticipate any action. I guess the only action would be is if we decided to vote to approve um goals for superintendent treasurer. Yes, Mary Kate?
Um, I think that perhaps are we talking about the employment of a public employee?
That would be the best suited of the options.
Okay.
Yes.
As we do not have legal counsel here, we cannot be discussing legal. So if we're discussing the employment of a public employee, then that's okay.
Very well. So I'll make a motion to convene into executive session to consider the employment of a public official.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing none, we are convening into executive session. Thanks for being here, everybody. All right, we are back into regular session here. Um, no further action can
Um, we reconvene in public session.
We have reconvened in public session, yes. Let's get a roll call, please.
Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Pembroke?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to the motion second to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting. Take a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion passes, meeting is adjourned.